Good evening, everyone. Today is February 26th and 2025, and I'd like to invite you or welcome you to this meeting in the Bismarck Planning and Zoning Commission. And with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Bitner? Commissioner Field?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Lukens?
Here.
Commissioner Shell?
Here.
Commissioner Schmitz? Commissioner Seabach?
Here.
Commissioner Wangan?
Here.
Commissioner Zent?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the first item in our agenda this evening, which is approval of the meeting minutes of our January 22nd meeting. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wangan.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Zent. Any discussion? Seeing none, Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabach?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we move on to item number two in our agenda, which is the consent agenda for this evening. And we have a number of items on our consent agenda, the first being Misty Waters and Misty Waters First Replat and Misty Waters Second Replat. It's a zoning map amendment request, and staff is recommending a call for public hearing. Item number two in the consent agenda is Williams Survey, Block 82, parts of lots nine through 12. And it's a zoning map amendment, and staff is recommending a call for public hearing. The third item in our consent agenda is item number C, which is Sonnet Heights Subdivision First Replat, and it's a zoning request for a zoning map amendment. Staff recommendation is to call for a public hearing. The fourth item in the consent agenda, item number D, is the Bowden Edition, Block 1, lots 1 through 23 and 25 through 34. It is a request for a zoning map amendment and a future land use plan amendment. Both are, staff recommends, call for a public hearing. The fifth item in our consent agenda is for Animal Services, item E, Animal Services and Boarding, and it's a zoning ordinance text amendment. Staff recommendation is to call for a public hearing. And the final item, which is item F in our consent agenda, is Missouri Valley Complex, Block 1, lots 1 and 3 through 19, and it is a request for a zoning map amendment, and staff recommendation is to call for a public hearing. Commissioners, what are your wishes as far as the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Bitner.
Thanks. Sorry, I got in a minute late. I had trouble smoking up, but I would move to approve the consent agenda and schedule a public hearing.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bitner. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Field. With that, any additional discussion, Commissioners? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Seabach?
Here. Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we will move on to this evening's regular agenda. The first item on our regular agenda is the Kilburn North Edition First Replat, Lot 1, Lot 3, and I believe Isaac is going to provide us with staff briefing this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. So our first regular agenda item today comes to us from DJK Ventures LLC, who is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the current RT Residential District to the CA Commercial District for Lot 3, Block 1 of Kilburn North Edition First Replat, as you can see on the screens here. This is located in North Bismarck between North Washington Street to the west and Normandy Street to the east, along the south side of 43rd Avenue Northeast. The applicant is requesting this change to match that of the property to the west, which is recently approved to change to CA Commercial as well from a conditional CA Commercial District after hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 18th, 2024, and the Board of City Commissioners on January 28th, 2025. Both parcels share a parking lot and an access point onto 43rd Avenue Northeast. The property, as of right now, is zoned RT Residential, but is surrounded by a variety of office uses, multifamily residential, the neighborhood shopping center to the west. And additionally, there is some undeveloped land kind of to the northwest there that is currently zoned CA Commercial on the north side of 43rd Avenue there on the screens. The area in the future land use plan is identified as neighborhood mixed use, which are described as being social and commercial gathering spaces for the immediate surrounding residential areas. The public was notified of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on February 14th and 21st, and 36 postcards were mailed to nearby properties on February 13th as well. Staff did receive two inquiries for additional information regarding this request, but to my knowledge, staff have not received any formal public comments prior to this meeting. As a cumulative result of all the findings contained in the staff reports in front of you, City of Bismarck staff find that this zoning map amendment would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and that it is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the zoning map amendment from the RT Residential District to the CA Commercial District for Kilburn North Edition First Replat, Lot 3, Block 1. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac. Commissioner Shell?
Isaac, the staff report, I believe you said it as well, has talked about access points onto 43rd. Could you maybe confirm that it's not on 43rd, but on the local street, Boulder Ridge Road, or can you maybe clarify that piece for me?
I certainly can. If I take a look at the map there, perhaps I misidentified that. Yes, it would appear they do share the access point onto Boulder Ridge Road.
Yep, thank you for the clarification. And then, is there any proposed use changes inside the building that you were aware of that's triggering this activity or this request?
Staff is not aware of any particular development request or use request for this area in conjunction with this request, but if the applicant is here, I can certainly let him speak to that more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions for Isaac? Isaac, I'm not seeing or hearing any? Thank you. With that, I will open a public hearing for this agenda item. Would either the owner or a requestor or representative be available to speak to this agenda item? And thank you for signing the log.
You're welcome, Chair Schwartz. Chair Schwartz, Commissioners, thank you, Isaac. Not a whole lot to add. My name's Daniel Keith, by the way, DJK Ventures, but DK Orthodontics is my business that envelops this said property, as well as the Ridge Retail Center, which is on the adjacent property that Isaac referenced in his summation. I come to you tonight after having approval a few weeks back from city commission on the adjacent property, having been transitioned from the CA Conditional over to the full commercial. And just a little bit of history on this lot, it's been a couple of years now, but initially it was one solid parcel or piece there that I subdivided into two pieces, one to be able to put DK Orthodontics, our healthcare business there, and then for the retail center on the other side. There with the movement, working with city staff over the last couple of months, and then moving through this commission and through the city commission on the other parcel, being transitioned to commercial. No intent on changing the orthodontic business or changing that business or that building and what's there, hopefully for many years in the future, but the request is simply for congruency of the entire property, being that it essentially is one property with a shared parking lot, shared access, as Isaac said, off of Boulder Ridge, and then with its proximity to the thoroughfare of 43rd. Just made sense in visiting with city staff and working with them in terms of the neighborhood mixed use and the comprehensive plan for the future that I moved this parcel over or make the request to this board of moving this parcel over to commercial, so the entire piece adjacent to 43rd was zoned commercial, but no intentions to change the business or the property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions for Daniel? I'm not seeing any Daniel. Thank you for the clarification, because I was wondering why, you know, you want to rezone a property when it would appear that you didn't need to.
Correct, yeah, only for congruency of the initial piece, which was all altogether.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Isaac, any additional comments?
Not at this time, Chair.
All right, thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendment, and staff's recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Zent?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wangan. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabach?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we will move on to item B in our regular agenda, which is Barbie's Neighborhood Subdivision, Block 1, Lot E of Lot 1. And I believe Lauren is going to provide us with staff briefing on this one.
Good evening, Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. Thomas Vetter is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the CG Commercial Zoning District to the Conditional MA Industrial Zoning District, and approval of a future land use plan amendment from the Parks and Open Space Designation to the Industrial Flex Designation on Lot E of Lot 1, Block 1, Barbie's Neighborhood Subdivision. This request is being made to allow outdoor storage of landscape materials and equipment. The request is located in East Bismarck, east of North Bismarck Expressway, in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of East Main Avenue and 52nd Street Northeast. Adjacent uses include single-family residences to the south, developing industrial land warehouses and storage yards to the west across 52nd Street Northeast, industrial warehouses and storage yards, including landscaping businesses to the north across East Main Avenue, and undeveloped land to the east. The property has been identified as Parks and Open Space in the future land use plan. These areas are kept in a largely natural state, providing many important functions for the community and ecosystem. Engineering staff have noted that future improvements to the intersection of 52nd Street Northeast and East Main Avenue may restrict access to this lot in the future. The applicant has been notified of this. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on February 14th and 21st, and 38 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on February 14th, 2025. Staff have received two formal public comments regarding this request, one in support of this request and one in opposition, mainly stating concerns related to issues of landscape materials, traffic concerns, and impacts to wildlife. These comments have both been forwarded to you, the Planning Commission. Staff have also received two calls related to this request. One of those individuals just wanted some additional information, and I believe the other submitted one of the formal comments to you. This request was evaluated according to standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. The proposed zoning district includes certain conditions. These include limiting the allowed uses to outdoor storage, portable storage containers, and accessory storage buildings related to the outdoor storage component. Additional landscaping, lighting, and noise requirements are also included to limit the impacts to the surrounding properties. Portions of this property are within the special flood hazard area and the floodway, and wetlands are present as well. Site improvements, including fill and grading within the special flood hazard area and floodway, would require a floodplain development permit, and site improvements within the wetland areas would also require approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The applicant has noted that additional work related to fill and grading is intended on this site. However, at this time, no specific site improvements have occurred, which would prompt additional staff review. As a result of all findings contained in the staff reports, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment and future land use plan amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment, district from the CG Commercial Zoning District to the Conditional MA Industrial Zoning District, and approval of a future land use plan amendment from the Parks and Open Space Designation to the Industrial Flex Designation for Lot E of Lot 1, Block 1, Barbie's Neighborhood Subdivision, with the conditions that a floodplain development permit is applied for and approved in conjunction with this request, and a landscape plan is submitted and approved, and the landscaping is planted or a surety requirement is executed prior to recordation of the zoning map amendment. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren? Commissioner Field?
Hasn't that already been built up right there?
Commissioner Field, Chair Commissioners, are you talking about some grading that has occurred in that site?
Well, I believe that's a lot that had a lot of dirt hauled in, right on the corner of 52nd.
There has been some grading, but it hasn't been within the special flood hazard area, and it hasn't been beyond a certain requirement that would require additional approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, is staff's understanding at this point.
And you're saying there's going to be a six-foot berm all the way across that where it's filled?
Part of the ordinance requirements for industrial uses adjacent to a residential component require a 50-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot berm, and that would be on the southern portion of that site where it would be required per ordinance requirements.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Field. Commissioners, additional questions for Lauren? Lauren, I'd have a question for you. What uses are allowed underneath that type of zoning?
So...
I understand that it's going to be used for material storage, but is there anything else that could be done there?
That's a great question, Chair Schwartz, Chair Commissioners. So this is really limiting and providing those conditions for that use here, so all that would be allowed would be that outdoor storage component, so mainly for the landscape materials and also any storage of materials or equipment. Portable storage containers would also be allowed here, however, those would need to meet ordinance requirements for where they're allowed to be placed. And then, the accessory use that you could have is a non-residential accessory building, however, that would need to be an accessory use to either the outdoor storage component or that portable storage container.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, one last time, any questions for Lauren? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Lauren, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open the public hearing on this agenda item. Would either the requestor or representative be here to speak to this agenda item? And sir, if you would put your name on the log and introduce yourself, that would be
Hello, Commissioners, thanks for your time. I'm Thomas Vetter. I bought this property roughly 18 months ago to 20 months ago. It had been, I think, since about 1979, owned by one of my landlords. I'm a farmer, so nothing was getting done with this lot, except every so often, a few things were stored there. There was old pellets I threw away, ripped out volunteer trees, garbage, a really, really poor approach, you couldn't get to it, so just not kept very well or used for anything, because this lady was 92, and they didn't have much to do with it. So, out of the 1.8 acres, we filled in currently close to one acre, so we got a core permit for a half an acre that was considered the wetland. The other acreage wasn't a wetland. Now, the remaining acres of lot is still a wetland, and I would have to get a permit to finish filling that in. Now, the reason why I haven't done that yet is because I have to have a plan for the core until they open that up for the public, so I have to see if this gets passed first to go for my next step. So if you guys have questions with the core, the engineers here with Alteg Engineering to answer more of those core questions if you need them. So, yeah, we brought about two- to three-foot of fill in there. Local landscapers are bringing that in, so some of them are happy with it. It gives, some of the, even the big construction companies have been dumping fill there. I don't allow any rocks or dirt. We have a dumpster there, trying to keep it clean for the neighbors. I did get a permit for the approach per the city. We did the culvert and everything that they did, so we're trying to improve it, which would also help taxes for the city, which the city's not making much on that right now, but in the future, that might bite me. So I just want to state that the traffic part is not going to change much from commercial to industrial. Your traffic issues are pretty similar. So commercially, you can still build a gas station. There's quite a few uses that commercial could have. Now, commercial, the city can correct me if I'm wrong, but needs like a 20-foot buffer versus industrial needs a 50-foot buffer with the earthen berm. The other thing I'd like to state, the property to the west of this was the Amazon Building or the current UPS Building. They got that rezoned to industrial as well with that earthen berm. I was actually looking back in all of my paperwork from buying this lot, the abstract's pretty thick. All the property to the south was zoned commercial years and years ago. They switched it to residential. Now, is that good or bad? That's opinion, I guess, but it's changed, and so I'm big on change. So the residents probably wouldn't be there if it wouldn't have got changed, and so I just filled to the north. That's industrial as well. Down the road, there's a landscaper. And I don't know really what else to say except the buffer, and we're trying to keep it clean and do everything legally that we have to. The traffic, I don't think will be a big issue. There's not going to be that much traffic. It's not like it's hundreds of semi-loads or carloads. Once the dirt is done, the semis will stop coming in, and we'd hope to have that done this fall, depending on per the Corps of Engineer and stuff and all their, obviously, weather permitting. So I'm just trying to make the lot work, otherwise it's unusable and unfeasible. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions for Thomas? I, like Commissioner Field, wandered over to take a look at it yesterday, and I was trying to figure out if you were building an island, because it looked like there was water on three sides of it. And my question, I guess, would be, is there going to be a problem with the landscaping berm or anything like that, as far as the residential properties to the south?
Do you mean like putting the berm in?
Putting the berm in and in the amount of space that it's going to take up.
So that is the only bad part, is the lot is 210 feet wide. The 50-foot setback is going to take a fourth of the property, and just to buy out the Corps of Engineers is $80,000 an acre for the wetland, which we paid through, through the Ducks Unlimited as well and stuff. So that is the only downside, is the buffer of that.
But it is something that you'll be able to do.
It is something that we do. And me and Lauren have talked about that a lot, that I know that I would have to do that, and that's why I went across the road and looked at that buffer. And I already gave Lauren a plan. I think they want some of the trees changed, which that's pretty easy to do.
Okay, and you've probably have mentioned this already, but what kind of materials are you planning to be storing out there on the site?
So a lot of it would be field rock, and then a lot like the landscaper. So I have a landscaper that wants to rent some spot to store some stuff. I give rocks to three different landscape companies with my farm, and they a lot of times don't have enough room to store it, different size rocks and stuff, just like similar to what rocks and blocks in the north has. Some dirt, topsoil, stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll ask again, Commissioners, any additional questions for Thomas before we let him off the podium? Commissioner Shell?
Thank you, Chair. Thomas, when it comes to, you know, loose material, do you have any ways to assure that that loose material doesn't migrate to the south and potentially harm the neighborhood with just leaving a pile of topsoil, whatever it might be, on a windy day? Can you maybe just express how that would work or function, and arrest any concerns that we might have on impacts to the neighbors by having, I'm not concerned about the rocks necessarily, but maybe loose material or a pile of topsoil definitely would have more of a potential harm?
Well, the earthen berm to the south is going to be six foot tall, so that would stop everything from going to the south, just the earthen berm itself. The other thing, I guess, would be, once we start bringing that in, we can even use concrete, what do they call those big two-foot by two-foot retaining walls? Because I think that's like what rocks and blocks use is to contain their stuff, just for to dump into, to pile it and stuff. Because obviously, we don't want to lose it either if you're paying to bring in topsoil.
Okay.
I mean, so we'll build retaining walls or whatever it takes to keep it from running up. The worst concern would probably be going to the east into that floodway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions for Thomas while we have him? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And sir, if you'd put your name on the log and introduce yourself, that'd be great.
I'm the homeowner to the south of this lot that they want to work on. And in the last 20 months or so, as he said, he's been bringing in dirt. Well, that's, you know, been a little bit of a nightmare for us, being in a valley. That wind just comes rushing down and kicks it into our yard. Well, we kind of dealt with it, figuring, you know, he's doing his stuff. Now he's asking to start hauling dirt and storing it there. When you dump big rocks out of a dump truck, it kicks dust up, I mean, all over the place. That wind is going to blow it right into our property. That really concerns me about allergies and dust. Also, I have a big problem with the environmental aspect of this. With that area being in a valley and being designated kind of a wetland for so long, it seems like a real big mistake to be parking machinery that it's going to leak all kinds of fluids and damage the wetland. So I have a lot of concerns about this and the visual effect. It's a really busy road. We have a lot of traffic coming by. Rocks and blocks has kind of been grandfathered in, but doing another development like this, I think is going to deter people from wanting to move out to the new Clear Sky Development to the south, and a lot of traffic problems too, I believe. So I hope you guys really consider this and take a close look at the area, and really consider the neighbors to the south and the development that's been there for so long. Thank you.
Sir, you didn't introduce yourself.
My name's Tavis Stout.
Tavis, thank you. I should remember your name. I believe you submitted a letter, correct?
We did, we did, thank you.
Tavis, just hold on.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions for Tavis? Commissioner Shell?
Tavis, could you imagine any mitigation concept that would prevent that migration of loose material into your property?
When we wrote our email, you know, because our house is up on a hill from where he developed, no matter what kind of berm he puts up, it's not going to stop the dust from coming at us. He can, if he planted, you know, eight 12-foot trees right now, maybe in five years, and dense, maybe in five years, the dust wouldn't blow. But, you know, we're only 75 feet from his property. It's really close to be piling dirt, so I just, again, would please take a look at the area and take that into consideration, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions for Tavis? I'm not seeing or hearing any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda Hello?
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Chair. And Commissioners, my name is Jan Wengler, and I stand in opposition to this zoning map amendment. My husband, Tom, and I live just three properties south of these proposed changes. And frankly, we fear the city will implement the same practices that we've experienced in the past with this project. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of my husband and myself only regarding the need for consistent enforcement of zoning regulations in Bismarck. While development is essential for economic growth, it's equally important to uphold commitments made to the surrounding neighborhoods and to ensure a balanced and respectful coexistence between commercial, industrial, and residential areas. Historically, in my personal experience, there have been reoccurring challenges in the city's follow-up through key zoning commitments in our area, including enforcing the required buffers and berms to be maintained and to mitigate, mitigate the visual and noise impact on residential areas from any industrial happenings, regulating outdoor storage to ensure compliance with designated allowances, ensuring proper downlighting on buildings and on lots to prevent excessive light pollution in adjacent neighborhoods, implementing weed and dust control measures to maintain environmental and aesthetic standards, addressing unpermitted land uses that persist despite our repeated reports and community concerns, and absolutely no buffer could possibly be sufficient next door to an R5 single-family residential lot for this type of use. I mean, you have to drive past it daily. These are not minor oversights. They impact property values, quality of life, and trust between residents and local governance. Numerous reports and complaints have been submitted over time, yet many of these issues continue unaddressed. And as the city moves forward with future planning and zoning decisions, it's imperative not to only set regulations, but to ensure their consistent enforcement. We urge the board to prioritize accounting in zone, excuse me, accountability in zoning compliance and to establish clear mechanisms for follow-through so that residents can have confidence in the commitments made to them. Lastly, the approach for this property is very close to the intersection, and we've witnessed city planning turn down zoning changes like this based on this single issue alone. Even your engineering staff said future improvements to that intersection may even restrict access to this lot, and it makes me fear it could necessitate the need for the city to have to purchase the lot from its current owner at taxpayer expense in order to facilitate any new projects there. We already suffer taxation without representation in the zoning ETA, so we know we can't vote this away. And for that, we would appreciate an opportunity for you to take a look at this from our perspective. I live across the street from the large industrial subdivision that was granted. The berm is not maintained. There are volunteer weedy Chinese elm trees, poplar trees. There are unmaintained trees that are there that have been blown down in windstorms. There's three evergreens that have been laying there since early last fall. The berm is not maintained until a number of us call the city and complain numerous times, and then it, it gets mowed and a few things get pulled. But we get all of the tumbleweeds every year. We had none of the dirt mitigation during that whole project over there. We have a lot of things that have not lived through that. We have a lot of property, personal property, windows, decks, things like that, that have been sandblasted because of wind and things that were not completely cared for in that area. And we fear the same with something like this, especially since it is outdoor storage. We were told that across from residential with industrial, we won't let anybody store anything outside their buildings or on the side of the building that faces the residential area. However, that's not the case. There are a number of, I'll call them businesses, in the industrial area that are storing equipment and just random items in their lots on the residential sides. There are, there are large buildings, we're calling it the, the Amazon-type size buildings. The first building they built had the required downlighting. We had no issue with it. We're trying to be good neighbors. We're all trying to get along. And then, the second building similar to it was built, where UPS now occupies it. And the light pollution coming in my front door every morning lights my entire house. I don't need to turn on any lights until I leave and/or, excuse me, till I come home in the evening. It is that bad. So, and, you know, those might seem pretty minor to people that you could see lights on a building, but when they shine inside your own, it, it shouldn't be because we were made all of these promises and none of them were kept. So, it makes us wonder, why should we believe that a small six-foot berm here is going to be treated any different than the one that runs all along 52nd, almost all the way down to Clear Sky Edition? I'm, I have seen a number of times, especially in the early morning hours, when people are trying to go to work and to school with the new additional traffic from Clear Sky that wasn't there before. Clear Sky is a city addition. We are still Burley County. We are not protected by the county or the county zoning. We are in the city ETA. I know I sat on this commission for 15 years. I understand how it works, and I know that there are difficult decisions to make. But we're just asking you that if there is not a way to keep something as you promised it, and this area was promised to be park area, it was, it's wetlands, it's got the runoff from the creeks coming down from the north. It's why 52nd has the, the water flow going underneath it that goes right into Apple Creek and out to the river. So, this area is important on the south side of the highway to be kept clean because it does impact the environment. And so, I'm just asking for those things to be considered when you make your decision and that should we not be considered, that you will at least consider finding someone that can enforce the zoning regulations that you set up when you set these things in motion because it's not happening in the Midwest industrial park. Thank you for your time. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jan. Commissioners, questions for Jan? Commissioner Field?
So, who'd you bring your concerns about the lighting pollution that's lighting up your house? Who did you talk to?
Personally, I did not. The other requests that I have made when I have called into the city for things like the outdoor storage or the fact that the undeveloped lots directly across from me were being used to house and store campers and trailers and all of that type of thing, and it was a disallowed use. The, the landowner even put up a sign, and it took us almost a year to get anybody to do anything about it. I believe at one time, there was 13 to 15 of these, you know, they bring their big fifth-wheel campers and the, and the like, open bed trailers, you know, that type of equipment, trailers and those kinds of things. And if you start coupling some of those things with the fact that we have to call in when things get completely out of control, the county's gone by and trimmed the edges of the ditches like they would on any undeveloped lot, but the rest of it remains and the tumbleweeds and the uncared-for things that are living on the berm. It, the trees that have fallen down are part of the dilemma for me with the light pollution. I think if it was a whole row of evergreens or something that, you know, blocked light 24/7/365, I can, I could just say I could live with it. But should I choose to sell my property and, and before that development went in, we choose to make big upgrades based on the promises made by the planning commission? I, I think if all of that were filled in and it was as glorious as it was proposed to us at the time, we would just be good neighbors and we wouldn't complain. But we had to fight this development the way they brought industrial right up against R5 or single-family residential. When the use is planned, had not been that. They cut the hill down 40 feet. So, now, we also have light pollution from in-town, plus this. You know, we would have just been good neighbors, but we had to fight this all the way to the State Supreme Court, and we don't want to have to do that anymore. We just want to be good neighbors. We, we would just like the things that are continually promised to us to be upheld.
Thank you, Commissioner Field. Commissioners, additional questions for Jan? Jan, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How far off, how far off of 52nd is your property?
I am right on 52nd. That is my address. The house sits back approximately, I'm going to say about 50, 60 feet from the road.
Okay. Okay. And in your opinion, the berm that has been?
I can see right over it, standing in my driveway.
You can see right over it?
Yeah.
And as far as the trees that are on the berm, don't really do anything to block?
It's not a good combination. There's probably about four broken deciduous trees and three evergreens and a lot of volunteer icky trees. I would never, the county would never plant either, but they aren't maintained, so, are taken out of there. So, they're growing up as more bush-like almost. I, I think if it was a six-foot berm from the top of the road instead of where the land sits, which is down quite a ways, and then the six feet comes up, it maybe brings it even with the road. But the trees aren't really growing above that. And since they aren't maintained and they aren't growing like somebody had drawn on a plan, it really isn't doing its job.
Okay. Thank you. And I have one last question for you. The major issue that you have with Mr. Vedder's project is the approach where it's located to get into the property and all of that?
Though I have a concern, it's not my biggest one. I would say the fact that we already have the eyesore of the industrial across the street from us, and we've watched the dirt be filled in there. Personally, I thought it was a temporary place that they were placing dirt because they were going to do a reconstruction project on 52nd and Highway 10. I thought it was something temporary and that it would have been removed. I, I was saddened to hear that it was going to be developed at all because I do have a concern for the DUCs and all of the wetland area that is there and the fact that it does run into Apple Creek and out into the Missouri. It, it is an environmental concern to me and an eyesore to have a bunch of equipment sitting out there on the corner on the way home every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? I'm not seeing or hearing any.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your input. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item.
Commissioners, my name is Donovan Voller. I live actually two lots down from where this is going to be, two lots to the south. My house is right on top of the hill. Couple of things that, you know, when, when this came, came up that come to mind was back a while when we were dealing with the Midwest Motors development, we had proposed that they, instead of turning that into an industrial park, that it become residential. And we were told at that time that they weren't going to make it residential because the future land use identified it as being commercial property or industrial-type property. And we weren't going to change the future land use. That wasn't going to be allowed. Now, now, here we are today. We've got a future land use that was identified as being open land or parks, but now we want to change it to an industrial, which is a massive change from a, a, a park. So, that's one of my concerns. The other concerns we have is, is Jan already talked about. She speaks much more elegantly than I do. She had a better stuff written out. With the, the landscape berm that was put in at Midwest Motors and not being maintained, the dirt, my, my elevation of my lot went up probably three or four inches during that whole process due to the blowing dirt. We have the rocks and blocks to the south on the other side of, of Main Street there, on the north side of Main Street, with the dirt they haul in there in their gravel driveway and their gravel or dirt lot. When the wind conditions are right, we have dirt blowing all the way over from there into our residences, even today. So, saying that a six-foot landscape berm is going to stop dirt from blowing into the adjacent lots, especially my neighbors to the north of me right next to this, the only thing that landscape lot is going to, or berm is going to do, that six-foot berm is going to do with the dirt is it's going to launch it higher into the air because the wind hits that berm and it doesn't stop. It goes up and over the top of that. So, now, we're, we're elevating that dirt higher into the air. So, in order to keep this dirt from, if, if dirt is allowed to be moved in there, loose dirt material like that, it's going to have to have a lot more trees, you know, and larger trees. You're not going to be able to go in and plant three-foot evergreen trees and twigs like they planted on the landscape berm along Midwest Motors. I think the tallest tree that got put in there was maybe six feet tall. And that's been in for multiple years now. And due to the fact that it's not maintained, nothing's gotten any taller except the volunteer trees that aren't supposed to be growing there. Everything else has actually gotten shorter because they don't maintain it. The tops freeze off or they break off. The storage of, of loose dirt or loose materials, in my mind, should be an absolute, not allowed due to the fact that it's blowing. You bring in big rocks and things like that, you dump them out of the truck, it's going to raise a certain amount of dust for a short amount of time. But if you pile black dirt or filled dirt, you have big piles of that there, as long as it's there, whenever the wind blows, that dirt's going to move. So, it's, it's going to continue to be an issue for us. Excuse me. The other question I have is, or concern, is this going to be a paved lot? Is it going to be gravel? Is it going to be concrete? You know, what are we, what are we going to have for base there? Because the more vehicles we have moving in and out of there, the more dust we're going to raise if it's just left as dirt. I guess that's pretty much all I got for, I opened the questions from y'all.
Commissioners, questions for Donovan? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Donovan, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Jamie Archambeau, and I also live with the property just south of Mr. Vedder's. I will concur with Mr. Vedder that he's been very respectful and pretty good about the dirt he's bringing in right now, for sure. But my concern is, I bought the property in late 2019 personally, and for lack of a better term, it was a dump when I bought it, and I had to put a bunch of money. I'd gander, we probably put $100,000 into our property. So, now, I'm kind of concerned I'm putting all this money into it, and my living room window is just going to see a bunch of rocks and dirt and all of Mr. Vedder's machinery. So, I'm just really concerned that I'm not going to be able to sell this property at all, if need be. So, that's the only thing I have. Any questions for me?
Commissioners, questions for Jamie? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, guys.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. Good evening.
My name is Charlene Danning. We live on the property that's just to the southeast from this area. And so, I'm thinking that the wind is going to blow any dirt or dust directly to us. The berm's not going to help us at all just because of the angle of the property. And typically, when the wind does blow, it blows from the northwest. So, we won't have any protection at all. The wind is going to blow right to us, and it's going to bring all this dirt and dust. And I want to second the concerns of the previous three people as well. So, and that's all I had to say.
All right, Charlene. Commissioners, any questions for Charlene? I think we're good. Thank you. With that, the podium is open. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody. So with that, I am going to close the public hearing. Lauren, do you have any final comments?
No additional comments at this time, Chair.
All right. Thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendment and a future land use plan amendment. And for both of those items, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. What are your wishes? Commissioner Field?
You know, you sit and listen to everything that's been said, and I'm probably the biggest opponent of people to be able to do what they want to do on their own dirt, and I'm sure all the other Commissioners would agree, because that's usually who I fight for. But in this case, I live on Apple Creek. There's nothing near me, and my wife complains continually because she can never dust the house enough, because just the small amount of activity that the cattle across the road cause, the two-hundred-plus cows roaming around, has a layer of dust everywhere in our house constantly. So, and I used to own a business adjacent to Northern Improvement, and I know what you're saying about getting sandblasted and getting hit by dust. There, it's the railroad tracks the only protection, but it doesn't slow down the wind or the dirt. And I don't have a clear answer how to tell the residents that we can put something in place that's going to solve this problem. The one question I have, did you know how this property was zoned before you bought it?
Yes, I did. It's owned commercial, so I can still build.
Thank you, Thomas.
Sorry about that. Yes, I did know it's commercial. And so a lot of these concerns, I respect them. I live in Bismarck too, in North Bismarck. Snow blows into my yard because there's nothing built to the north. Some is nature, some is rocks and blocks. Owners to the south, they're up probably ten, fifteen feet, they're still looking at rocks and blocks. No matter if this gets done or not, they're already looking at a landscape place. Jan is two-hundred-and-some yards down, it's not affecting her, except for when she drives by. Well, I drive by a lot of locations every day that I could say affect me. It's also a business, you're trying to make some money or live. But stuff can still get built on commercial, a gas station, greenhouses, a daycare, there's still going to be the same traffic issues. It's not like, and if they build more houses, there's going to be issues. And I guess if they wanted it, they, I know the one owner tried to buy the property because they found out I was buying it, so they might be upset about that, but if they don't like what they have, it is for sale, I guess, if they want to buy it, if it's that big a concern. If they don't want to see progress and want to have it be a wetland, they can buy it and pay the taxes and let it be a wetland.
Thank you. So Commissioner Field? I'm looking for a motion right now.
I'm going to abstain from this one, just because I, I have feelings on both sides of it, and if we...
Can I get you to turn your mic on? Thank you.
I'm going to abstain from voting on this because I can see both sides of this, and if I tell you that you can put that there, I'm going to feel like a jerk, because it's going to affect all the neighbors. And I agree with you, rocks and blocks is right there too. So yes, it's already got more unwanted activity for the neighborhood, and maybe they should have never changed it and let them build houses there, so that point's taken too, but I guess I'm too on the fence on this one, so I'm just going to not say yes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Field. So Commissioners, I'm back asking. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. What are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bitner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to rain on any parade there, but in Burley County meetings and whatnot, usually if you abstain from something, it's because of either a conflict of interest or a direct fiduciary involvement or something, and I totally understand why Mr. Fields would like to abstain, but we're not really allowed to do that. I'm okay with him abstaining, but in our county commission meetings and whatnot, the bar is pretty high for abstaining, and it usually involves a financial interest of some sort. But I do want to add, Commissioner Zent, you know full well the issues that I had with dust for many years on Eightieth Street, and it took us forever to get anything done with the dust here. There was a notion that, well, those trees, you know, they must block that dust. That thing of putting up a berm and thinking you put a few trees on there and it's going to block dust, that's just not happening. My yard, when we used to have the gravel road in front of us, was unbelievably dusty, and I have a lot of trees, mature trees. I've lived here for thirty-eight years. So I completely understand the concerns with additional dust, and I know the problems when Midwest Industrial was going in. They really had a tough go, and I also understand that they had a lot of difficulty getting a response from the city to their concerns. The citizens have had a tough go of it out there already, and so I'm not willing to support anything that makes it worse, so with that, I would move to deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bitner? Do I have a second? Who? Commissioner Johnson? Okay, we have a motion to deny and a second. Commissioners, additional discussion?
I'll just add, I completely agree with Commissioner Field too. I'm toward on this, it actually fits in with a lot of what's happening out there, but part of why we have these public hearings is to hear comments from adjacent property owners, and I would be exactly where they're at in trying to fight this if I was right adjacent to it. And the owner has a good point, that they may be less happy with something else that could go there by right in a CG district right now, but I guess I'm just, that's where I land after hearing the public hearing and the public comments is to vote against it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Shell?
Thank you, Chair. I would note just from the service perspective, we do, as the city has water in the Main Avenue corridor, but we do not have a sanitary sewer, so some of those uses probably could not be envisioned fully at this point in time. So I think some of the perspective could be, what do you do with this land in this interim state and without making a huge investment in something when it really can't be its full-fledged future gas station, or whatever it could be, ten, fifteen, fifty years from now? My hesitation with this is just the loose material and the impact. I'm probably not as concerned if it was storage of stationary things, you know, cars for sale or something like that that you could pull off the lot when you need to, but the concept of a site that's active at a high degree, as well as, you know, loose material that might migrate into a neighbor, I guess is probably the piece that I'm struggling with, is the types of uses that could be used in this site.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional comments? Thoughts? Okay. My concerns lie in the wetland side of things. I keep looking at the property and wondering, and we really didn't address that in, as we were, as Thomas came to the podium and talked about it, other than that part of the property is part of the wetland side of things. And it's an awful wet area. I can't imagine building on it or using it as a business site, but people tend to do things with property that I can't even imagine, so that's probably not a big deal. Anyway, any additional comments? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. The motion is to deny. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Sure. Did, I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson, were you the second on that motion?
Yes, he was.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wongan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabok?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion to deny is approved. Moving on to Item C in our regular agenda this evening, is George subdivision, Block One, Lot Two, and Lauren is going to provide us with staff briefing on this this evening.
Good evening again, Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. International Church of the Forest Square Gospel is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the A-Agricultural Zoning District to the PUD Plant Unit Development Zoning District, and a future land use plan amendment from the Urban Reserve Midterm Designation to the Community Mixed Use Designation on Lot Two, Block One, George Subdivision. I just want to make you aware, if the future land use plan amendment is approved, it will alter the urban service area boundary. This request is being made to allow for a religious institution campus that would include a variety of educational, social, and commercial uses. The request is located in northeast Bismarck, or northeast of Bismarck, north of Forty-Third Avenue Northeast, and on the east side of Eightieth Street Northeast. Staff had, have noted concerns about the ability to provide life and safety protections for the proposed uses without city infrastructure at the site. Based on the narrative provided by the applicant, the applicant is aware of these interim site constraints. Water would be provided by South Central Water Resources. They have also noted that if fire suppression is required, storage tanks would be utilized. Additionally, the applicant intends to convey any effluent to the common drain field with an ability to expand that area if needed. City and county staff have noted that the current access point onto Eightieth Street should be sufficient for the proposed current use. George Drive to the north of the lot is not yet built. However, a second access point onto George Drive is available in the future. As development in this section and surrounding areas increases in the future, further discussion on the development of George Drive may be necessary. Staff have noted that a traffic impact study may be required in conjunction with subsequent phases of development for this site. Adjacent land uses include agricultural uses to the north and west, agricultural uses and a, and east-south central power maintenance facility to the east, and the Burley County roadway maintenance facility to the south. Property has been identified as Urban Reserve Midterm in the future land use plan, and those are areas suitable for urban development but are not projected to be annexed by the year 2045. The public has been notified of this request. Notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on February fourteenth and twenty-first, and seven postcards were mailed to owners of nearby properties on February fourteenth. Gibbs Township was notified of this request on December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, and provided a resolution of support which should be included in your packet. To my knowledge, staff have not received any inquiries or formal comments regarding this request. This request was evaluated according to standards contained within the Comprehensio Plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. The proposed zoning district would allow a religious institution campus that would include a variety of educational, social, and commercial uses. Based on the narrative that was provided by the applicant, a religious institution and sports recreation facility for soccer are intended for the first phase of development on this site. Certain development standards included in the PUD would alleviate any potential incompatibilities to future or current adjacent land uses. Based on the proposed ordinance permitted, primary uses include commercial and public recreation uses, education uses, and a religious institution. Permitted accessory uses include a single or two-family dwelling as an ancillary use to a religious institution, limited retail and service uses, ancillary office uses, and non-residential accessory buildings. Childcare centers, temporary farm and garden produce sales, and a seasonal variety, or a seasonal nursery would also be permitted as special uses, which would require that special use permit to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The current surrounding uses may make residential development less likely and desirable in this section. However, the dimensional and development standards and requirements, including requirements for landscaping, parking, lighting, screening, and signs noted within the proposed ordinance are intended to mitigate those off-site impacts to those future developments. Based on the exhibit submitted with the PUD, a current stormwater and drainage easement will need to be released and replaced through the city's plat modification process in conjunction with this request. As a result of findings contained in the staff report, city Bismarck staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment and the future land use plan amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare. I will note discussions are currently ongoing between the applicant and staff regarding uses within the zoning district. As such, the applicant has requested that the public hearing be continued for this item, just based on those continuing discussions. Therefore, staff recommends continuing the public hearing on this request for a zoning map amendment from the A-Agricultural Zoning District to the PUD Zoning District, and a future land use plan amendment from the Urban Reserve Midterm Designation to the Community Mixed Use Designation on Lot Two, Block One, George Subdivision. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bitner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I didn't quite catch it, but you referred to septic system, and I wonder if you could elaborate just a little bit whether that was a completely on-site system, or if that would result in any effluent discharge towards adjoining property, please? Thanks.
That's a great question, Commissioner Bitner. Chair Commissioners, based on the narrative that the applicant submitted, I believe the drain field that they're proposing to have for the site would be on-site. However, I believe the applicant's representative is here and he could provide additional clarification if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bitner. Commissioners, additional questions for Lauren? Commissioner Shell?
Lauren, presumably when George subdivision came in, because it only dedicated half of the right-of-way for George Drive, it was not, that subdivision was not required to construct that public street, can you maybe just, can you expand on the county's position if this proposal, if the zoning change moves forward, would George Drive be required to be constructed, or would that be at a later date that decision made?
Great question, Commissioner Shell. Chair Commissioners, based on discussions with city and county staff regarding George Drive to be constructed, the current use would be fine at this time. However, based on future phase development of this site, since the applicant is intending to have it as a multi-phase site, county staff and city staff have noted that as this continues, they may need to relook at it at that time. However, right at this moment, it would not be, need to be constructed as a secondary access point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions for Lauren? Commissioner Seabok?
What do you consider the property to the north, and here you have a former livestock pavilion, what do you consider it now?
That's a great question, Commissioner Seabok. Chair Commissioners, so it was the former livestock pavilion. I believe it has changed hands since, however, it is still currently zoned A-Agricultural and would allow any agricultural uses that are permitted within that, within the ordinance.
Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Chair. And Lauren, I have probably a similar question, looking at the property directly to the north and the access off of that property, has that been arranged for that access point and worked out with that property owner?
Great question, Commissioner Larson. Chair Commissioners, that access point is actually platted within George subdivision, so the current property owner does have access onto his site based on his parcel that was plotted.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson. Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Shell?
Lauren, one more question on, are there any size limitations or boundaries to be considered for the size of the church structure, the sports complex, any of the things that are going to be listed in this PUD? Is that something that's either in here now or will be worked in later?
Great question, Commissioner Shell. Chair Commissioners, so what's currently in there for limitations on the site is the height limitations, so the commercial rec... So the commercial recreation facility for the soccer complex has a limitation of 80 feet, and all other buildings on the site have that limitation for 50 feet. However, any potential spires or anything that would be related to a religious institution or any other similar building, those would not be counted within that 50-foot limitation there. However, as I stated earlier, staff and the consultant are still working through some of those discussions, and if there's any additional items we need to be looking at for size constraints, we can discuss that as well.
Thank, Commissioner Shell?
And maybe if I could continue, just the concept of the site sketch that was provided maybe shows a reasonably sized church facility and a reasonably sized athletic complex. I just would be cautious that if the PUD doesn't have some sort of limitation of what that size, the footprint could be, really you could put a 12-plex soccer complex out here and it would be by right because the zoning didn't say that that wasn't allowed. So that'd be something for your consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions for Lauren? I have one question for you, Lauren, and maybe I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. But, you know, for the property to be developed, you know, usually we require a secondary access for fire protection. Has rural fire been brought into this at all? Do we need to provide that?
That's a great question, Commissioner, or Chair Schwartz. County Fire, as well as City Fire, have been brought into this discussion, along with County Highway and our city traffic engineer. They were all part of that access discussion, and based on what was provided in the staff report, that's was the consensus brought about by those discussions.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one last question if nobody else does. Which, the business that is operating out of the property to the north that was the original livestock pavilion, what kind of business is that, if I may ask? Do you know?
I have no idea at this time, Chair Schwartz. However, potentially maybe other staff members would have a better idea for that. I'm only aware of what's going on on this current lot.
Yeah, I can, I can shed a little bit of insight in there. We have been asked that same question from others in the surrounding area, and we are investigating that currently. We have scheduled some, a few opportunities to meet with the property owner to ensure that the property is, that the use being used at the property now is in compliance with the zoning, so it's under investigation.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that, Ben. And thank you, Lauren. Commissioners, additional questions? Not seeing or hearing any, Lauren? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open up the public hearing on this agenda item. Is either, and I see Landon stepping up as a representative, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Landon Amler, Swinson Engineering. Yeah, just answer a few questions that have been out there. This is kind of an unusual proposal. Typically would maybe fall under something like a CG zoning, which is kind of a wide-ranging commercial aspect, but we wanted to ensure that some of the uses here are conforming to a specific ideal for this, for this religious campus. And so, we're still having some discussions with staff, that's why we're asking for the continuance tonight, so we can really hone down in on those specific uses without, without just making this wide open for any commercial use to happen if this project should go away and then somebody else buys the property, and then we don't know what's going to go out there. So that's why we presented it as a PUD. Commissioner Bittner's question earlier about the effluent, really it relates to the fact that there was, north of this property, there was a livestock facility at one point, and the effluent from that site was coming onto this site, and there was an easement for that. They went through the State Department of Environmental Quality and it was all approved. But since that, that livestock facility has gone away, that permit really isn't valid anymore for them. We did speak with the department, so the effluent aspect is irrelevant now at this point. Our septic system will be handled onsite, nothing, nothing onsite that we, offsite that we would need to worry about. But yeah, as far as the continuance goes, and that's really what we're asking for tonight, is we just want to hone in on those uses a little bit more, speak with city staff a little bit more and really lock that down. As far as county fire goes, like Lauren mentioned, as far as the first phase would go, which would be church, the soccer facility, and likely the daycare possibly, county fire, county engineering seem fine with a single access point for those. Future phases, it could be a different story.
Okay.
But any questions you have, I can certainly try to answer them for you.
Commissioners, questions for Landon? Landon, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Having driven by the property and noting all of the heavy equipment and that, that's part of the shared access to this, was another access point considered?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. So there is another access point onto George Drive, which is in the north part of this property, but it doesn't, it's not fully dedicated as right-of-way right now. When that point comes along, hopefully other subdivisions have come in and that road has been completed. If not, then a group will have to get together and figure out a way to get another access point down there.
Is there a possibility for one off of 80th, or is that off, off the table?
That would of course be up to city staff and yourselves, but I'd say it's unlikely considering that that is an arterial road, they're going to want to limit how much access is going to be onto 80th.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'll ask Commissioners, any questions for Landon?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bittner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, you know, if we ended up needing a second access at some point in the future because of other development, are you looking forward towards some additional access? Or how's that going to work out in the future? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bittner. We certainly are looking for that second access at some point. We believe if this campus is successful in the way that the church wants it to be, there will be significant development here, and we know we're going to need that, that second access. So yes, we are looking for that second point on, on George to the north.
Okay. If I could follow up then, does, is all of that property owned by the same owner now, or is it a couple of different owners? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bittner. I believe the property is owned by one owner.
Okay, so if it's all one owner now, could they do a, I guess as part of future discussions, could they, they do an access easement on that property to accommodate a second access ahead of time? Thank you.
Yep, that was discussed with county staff a bit, and then yes, and easement is certainly a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bittner. Additional questions for Landon? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Landon. Thank you. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody stepping up. Staff's request is to continue this into our March meeting. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Motion to continue.
We have a motion from Commissioner Zent to continue. We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? If not, Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item D in our regular agenda, which is the Fuller Fountain subdivision. And I believe Isaac is going to provide us with staff briefing on this.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. And Commissioners, I sure hope it's pronounced Fuller Fountain, because that's how I've been pronouncing it, so. This request comes to us from City of Bismarck, who is requesting approval of a major subdivision final plat titled Fuller Fountain subdivision. This is located to the east of Bismarck, along the south side of Apple Creek Road, as you can see on the screens before you, between Yagan Road to the west and 66th Street Southeast to the east. The product consists of a one-lot in one-block subdivision with an area of approximately 2.29 acres when you include the right-of-way of Apple Creek Road, and about 1.87 acres when you exclude that right-of-way. The property itself is currently zoned MA industrial, and that is not being requested to change, but the land around it is to the east, south, and west, all either undeveloped or agricultural, similar kind of state there. And then to the north, northeast or so, we have some residential land that is zoned either RR or R5 residential. The plat area is identified in the future land use plan as being parks and open space, which is described as areas that are kept in a largely natural state, providing many important functions for the community and ecosystem. Note on that future land use plan designation in relation to the current zoning being more industrial in nature, is that when the future land use plan was being created and there was the public discussion about the future land use plan categories, areas such as this were put into the category of parks and open space, in this case in particular because of the floodway or special hazard flood area. This plat is currently entirely within the special hazard flood area, and so there's that connection there because of Apple Creek to the south, or kind of going around the property there. That does not mean that development is necessarily impossible here, but there are other processes to go through, including acquiring a floodplain development permit. So a little historical context there on that. The other thing I want to bring to your attention regarding the plat document itself is that this property is at the intersection of two section lines. The east-west section line, which currently makes up Apple Creek Road, is the boundary between Lincoln Township Sections one and 12, and then the north-south section line on the eastern part of the property, making that eastern boundary of the plat, is the boundary of Lincoln Township's Section 12 and Apple Creek Township's Section 7. So that east-west section line is a roadway currently, but then that north-south section line is not a roadway, but is still considered right-of-way until said section lines are vacated, which is an action required by the county commission, if that is their desire. So there will be a condition on this approval for that north-south right-of-way as part of the section line on that eastern portion of the plat to be vacated by the Burleigh County Commission. That is going to be requested at an upcoming meeting of the Burleigh County Commission, but that is a condition on the approval of this particular request. So the public was duly notified of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on February 14th and 21st, and then 12 postcards were mailed to owners of nearby properties on February 13th as well. To my knowledge, staff has received one formal comment from the public, which was forwarded to the commission prior to this hearing. As a cumulative result, though, of all the findings in the staff reports, city of Bismarck staff find that the proposed major subdivision final plat would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the major subdivision final plat titled Fuller Fountain subdivision, with the condition that the north-south section line right-of-way separating Lincoln Township Section 12 and Apple Creek Township Section 7, along that eastern boundary of the plat, is vacated by the Burleigh County Commission prior to approval of, by the Bismarck Board of City Commissioners. And before I ask if you have questions, I will note two other things. The first one is that I failed to mention that the purpose for future development on this plat is for a sanitary lift station for the city of Bismarck sewer service. And then the second thing is to bring to your attention a quick typo in the staff report. At the top of the staff report, it says the staff recommendation is to approve. That is incorrect, but the agenda and then the staff recommendation section correctly identifies the staff recommendation as being approved with conditions. So with that, does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac? Commissioner Field?
Well, being that area is like sequestering leech habitat right now, why do you need a lift station out there? Because we just got through telling these people we didn't want to dust them, now we're putting a lift station on the other end of their road. And so, what's the real purpose for a lift station? There's nobody near there.
I would toss that question over to Commissioner Shell for the comment.
Yep. Commissioners, Commissioner Field, the city purchased a piece of property at this location in order to replace the existing lift station that we have at Hay Creek within some of the county fairgrounds properties. So the goal was, through an analysis, was determined to either replace and rehab the existing location or find another spot along that sewer shed to create a new lift station. So it was decided to move it further, a little bit further down the sewage line to get to this location, then as part of a project would then install new sanitary sewer gravity line to this new lift station, as well as a forest main that would lead from this station back to what would be our gravity system to be carried back to the wastewater treatment plant. So it's not necessarily to serve any adjacent properties in this location right now, but into the next 10, 15, 50 years, this would be the location that other sewage can be drained via gravity to this location.
Thank you, Commissioner Field. Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Zent?
So the vacation, or the vacate of the boundary is just for the plat, right? The two, the section line? What about the rest of that section line heading south? That was not going to be vacated?
So yes, Commissioner Zent, Chair Schwartz, and Commissioners, the request that would go towards the Burleigh County Commission at this time would just be for the portion of the plat. The rest of the section line along there would still be statutory right-of-way for section lines unless, you know, that were to be vacated at some point in the future.
So if a road is ever to be developed or water lines or something along there, it would end at the parcel, not at Apple Creek Road?
Yes, in that case, that would be correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Bittner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that that request to vacate would come before us at some point as the county commission, but I'm wondering why would, I'm not clear on why would it be necessary to begin with, because a sewer lift station doesn't take up much space. So I wonder if you could enlighten me a little bit on why that would be necessary at all? Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Bittner, so, and Chair Schwartz and Commissioners, this did come up during staff discussions between city staff and county highway staff, so they were part of this discussion as well. But I don't believe a representative of county highway is here at this meeting, so I would request further comments or clarification from them specifically, or it appears Commissioner Shell maybe has further information.
Sure, I can weigh in this one too. So from my understanding, when the city of Bismarck or any other municipality plats land over a section line, that plating action, in effect vacates that, that section line and replaces it with whatever roadway easements and road rights-of-way would be on the plat, that same authority is not granted to the county. So in the county, a plating action can't, I guess, get rid of a section line. So the choice would be on this plat to continue to show the 33-foot statutory roadway easement on the plat, or remove that. But in order to remove that statutory easement, that request would have to come before the county. So I think that's the rationale behind it, Commissioner Bittner.
Okay, so it's, it's just not really needed? It's just a difference between the city and county and how it's handled? Is that? Because I can see at some point, I can see at some point a road being there. I mean, it's a real possibility, so you can be sure I'll be talking to the county engineering about that, but I was just questioning if there, is there an easement on this plat before us now?
Commissioner Bittner, as of right now, I do not believe there is a shown easement or right-of-way for a future roadway on that eastern portion for that section line area, if that answers your question.
Does, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bittner. Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, Zent?
So Isaac and Commissioner Shell and Commissioner Bittner, what I see here is 52nd Street Southeast came down and was moved over from the section line due to that big hill that is right there. I could see if approach would have to come off of this land, it would best to be a T-intersection coming up that way and not up the proposed section line to be vacated. So maybe that's a good reason why that would be vacated and then have an approach coming in to marry up with 52nd Southeast.
Commissioner Shell?
So, thank you, Chair Commissioners. Commissioner Zent, so the plan for the lift station would have its driveway or its approach to access the lift station property to line up with that intersection of 52nd and Apple Creek Road. Because of the railroad tracks just south of here, the floodway floodplain and the confluence of Apple Creek and Hay Creek, it was probably not, and I don't believe it's in our long-range fringe area roadmaster plan, to show a connection or a roadway that would continue 52nd through this area. So therefore, it was not identified to dedicate a public right-of-way as part of this plat, and that's kind of what then led to the request to even remove the statutory roadway easement. If that is a concern, and maybe Isaac something for us to consider, I think there's probably ways that this board could approve with a condition ways that this board could approve with a condition that isn't maybe so locked down. I would agree that the plat as it's configured would need a county action to remove the statutory right-of-way, or statutory roadway easement, but there's also a scenario where that stays in place, and as just noted on the plat, is a 33-foot roadway easement on the far eastern side of the plat along the section line. I think either of those are satisfactory, and it would not affect the lift station layout in any way, shape, or form.
Yes, Commissioner Shell, Chair Schwartz, and Commissioners, I would just add that the staff recommendation has a certain condition, but you as the board certainly can change that condition or request a different action with a different condition or whatever is your desire.
Thank you. Great questions, great answers. Additional questions for Isaac? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Isaac. Thank you. With that, I'm going to open up the public hearing on this agenda item. Is there anyone here that would care to step forward and address it? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Isaac, any additional comments?
None at this time, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a major subdivision final plat, and staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. What are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bittner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not comfortable with the plat in the absence of action to address the right-of-way, you know, the section line right-of-way, and possible access easements for future roads, so I would like to motion to continue, so I can have a chance to discuss this with the county engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bittner. Do I hear a second, Commissioners?
No second.
We have a second from Commissioner Fields. So the motion is to continue this agenda item to our March meeting. Any additional discussion? I'm not seeing or hearing any. So with that, Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. Before we proceed further, Ben, I have a procedural question for you, and that is that I close the public hearing on that agenda item. Does that create a problem?
I believe you'll, I don't believe so, Chair, as long as the motion was to continue the item, I think you'll be, you will need to reopen the public hearing to consider this item, but you, I think you acted appropriately.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Commissioners. With that, we're going to move on to the last item in our regular agenda, which is Pheasant Valley, Block 1, Lot 6. And once again, Isaac is going to provide us with staff briefing on this.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. So our final agenda item for the evening comes to us from Jamie and Leslie Rickman, who are requesting approval of a special use permit at Lot 6, Block 1, Pheasant Valley subdivision, to increase their total accessory structure size to 3,200 square feet. This property is located east, northeast of Bismarck, depending on your point of reference, between Ring Neck Road and Rooster Road, along the west side of Golden Crest Road, as seen on the screens before you there. The property is zoned RR residential, and almost all of the land, well, actually, all of the land around it is zoned RR rural residential, as the project area is in a series of almost fully built-out rural residential subdivisions. As you likely know, the rural residential properties with at least 65,000 square feet are allowed up to 2,400 square feet of accessory structure space without a special use permit. With that permit, they can increase that size up to 3,200 square feet. This particular property has a little under 87,000 square feet, so they meet that threshold. And the applicant has told staff they intend to construct a 3,168-square-foot shop for personal use, and the parcel, as mentioned, meets the minimum size requirement for said special use permit, and appears to have plenty of room on the property to allow the proposed structure to meet all relevant setback requirements and building code things as well. The area is identified in the future land use plan as being rural residential in the future land use plan, which is described as places of country living with convenient proximity to city life, and this is not identified in the growth phasing plan as being urban reserve. So urban-style redevelopment within the next 50 years or more is unlikely, given current information. The public was notified of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on February 14th and 21st, and 59 postcards were mailed to nearby properties on February 13th as well. Hay Creek Township was notified of this request on January 27th, 2025, and to the best of my knowledge, we have not received a response as of this meeting. Also, to my knowledge, staff have not received any other public comments regarding this request either. So as a cumulative result of all the findings contained in the staff report, City of Bismarck staff find that special use permit would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and that it is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and all relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit for increased accessory structure size up to 3,200 square feet on Lot 6, Block 1, Pheasant Valley subdivision. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac? Isaac, I'm not seeing or hearing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open the public hearing for this agenda item. Is the applicant or representative here? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jamie Reichman. It's my first commission meeting, so very interesting tonight.
Well, welcome.
So yeah, like was said earlier, we're just using the property for, or the building for storage, because everyone has too much junk, and we're the same, so pontoon and other stuff, so, yeah, we've been looking forward to adding this addition to our house for a few years, and does anyone have any questions for me?
Commissioners, questions for Jamie? I think we're going to let you off the hook, Jamie.
All right.
It looks like a nice shop.
Thank you. All right, have a good night.
Thank you. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody jumping up to do that, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, this is a request for a special use permit, and staff recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wangan, and a
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Zent. Sorry, Commissioner Bittner, you lost out on that one.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Without any additional Without any additional discussion. Commissioner Johnson?
I don't know, as part of the zoning rewrite, we could just start allowing some of these things by right, because we don't, I don't think we ever take a negative action on one of these that comes through the city commissions, or the planning and zoning, so just something to think about.
That's a good thought. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Bittner?
Yeah, I've made that suggestion in the past. Got a dog. I've made that suggestion in the past, and I totally support that, and I thank you for making the suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bittner. Any other comments this evening on this agenda item?
Chair, if I may add, we will definitely take note on that, and we have heard that suggestion, and when a draft comes out, you can check and make sure, but that's one of the things we've heard consistently, that if things are being approved, the special use permit, then we may not need to have it required anymore.
All right, thank you, Daniel. Well, with that, and apparently there are no, is any, there isn't any more discussion, I'm going to ask Sarah to please call roll.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we move on to other business. Is there anything for the good of the commission this evening? And I'm not seeing or hearing, so with that, Sarah, I'm going to have to ask you, what is the date for the March meeting?
March 26th.
Our next meeting will be March 26th, and I look forward to seeing you then. With that, I adjourn the meeting.